Good afternoon and welcome to the third of our virtual candidate forums for the general election of 2020. My name is Sean Evans. I'm the CEO and President of the Meridian Chamber of Commerce. The Meridian Chamber currently represents over 600 Meridian businesses and combined these businesses employ over 15,000 people in our area. On behalf of the Board of the Directors and the Government Affairs Committee, we appreciate the candidates that are running for public office that have agreed to join us during these forums so that our business members can learn a little bit more about the candidate and their positions on topics and issues that are important to the Meridian Business Community. This has been a challenging year for everyone, but some businesses have taken it harder than others, and the usual struggle to be successful in business has had many additional burdens put on it this year. That's why it's important that Meridian be ready to move forward on the challenges that were in place even before COVID. From transportation infrastructure to the tremendous economic and population growth being experienced in recent years, to our tax structures and how we're going to pay for the needs of the future without burdening certain segments of the population. In these forums, we'll be asking the candidates to focus their comments and answers to our audience, the Meridian Business Community. Virtual meetings have become a staple of our lives over the last six months, and campaigning during this time is probably even more challenging. These forums are meant to inform the business community on the candidate's positions, and this event and others are being livestreamed on Facebook and will be available on LinkedIn and YouTube as well for later viewing. Joining me today is Matt Davidson, publisher of the Idaho Press, to help me moderate this forum. Good afternoon, Matt. Thank you for joining.
Happy to be back.
The Idaho Press and the Meridian Press are our partners in the virtual forums over the next two weeks. Without further delay, I'm going to turn it over to Matt to introduce each of the candidates that we have with us today and let them begin with their brief opening statements.
Thank you, Sean. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all of you for taking the time out of your day. We recognize that you're busy. We recognize these are crazy times, but we also feel it's very important to get your positions in front of as many people as possible, so we have an informed electorate. So we're going to start with opening statements. So joining us today, we have Ada County Commissioner race for District One and District Two. District One, we have the incumbent Diana Laciando, challenger Ryan Davidson. For District Two, we have Bill Rutherford, the Democrat, and Rod Beck. We're going to start in District One with opening statements from the incumbent Diana Laciando. So Diana, two to three minutes.
Well, thank you so much for creating this forum. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak specifically to the Meridian community and to our business leaders. I want to start by noting that in my role as county commissioner, I will always support businesses by ensuring that we stay a place that attracts talent, that we can keep homegrown talent, and we've got to stay a great place to live and becoming even better place to work. The county's role in all of this is ensuring public safety, essentially. We are the backbone of public safety in our community, and whether it is through our court system, through the sheriff's office, and even the corridor's office and our paramedics, people value our community and especially Meridian because it is a safe place to live. And so I want to make sure we are continuing that legacy. As you know, I am also really passionate about ensuring that we grow and then grow in a responsible way, fiscally responsible way. I'm a fourth generation Idahoan, and I want to make sure that we can preserve and protect the things that we love about this community while lessening the burden on existing property taxpayers as we grow. During this year, I have been challenged with things I never even imagined as a member of the Board of Central District Health. I've tried to navigate that thoughtfully, safely, while ensuring that our businesses can continue to grow and thrive. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here with all of you today and hope to earn the honor of your vote.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. So now we're going to move to the challenger in District One, Ada County Commissioner race, Ryan Davidson. Two to three minutes, please.
Thanks for having me. My name's Ryan Davidson, and I've lived here since 1995. I moved here with my family the year I graduated high school, and we came from Winnipeg, Manitoba. The family business was a successful crane and heavy machinery moving company that my grandparents had started over half a century ago. And it just came to a point where my dad was looking for a change and looking for some new opportunities in America. So he packed the family up and we moved to Boise. And he really, he drove around the Pacific Northwest. He looked at a bunch of different cities, and he settled on the Treasure Valley just based on a hunch that this would be a great place to settle. And it turned out he made the right decision because we've all been happy here ever since. We've never wanted to move. We wanted to stay here and build a legacy and put down some roots. And so I've been very happy to be an Ada County resident, to watch it grow. The first house that my parents built was in Meridian, close to Fairview and Eagle. Back then, it was just farmers' fields. Our subdivision was the only thing out there. Now it's pretty much businesses on all four corners of the intersection. Well, there's one corner still left, but that's where the Walmart complex is and the Village in Meridian. We never could have anticipated that much growth in the time we've been here, but it just goes to show that a lot of other people around the country see Idaho as still a pioneer state where you can move here with just your dreams and your aspirations and really make something of yourself. We've got a ton of land. We have this low population, and we're growing. And that's one of the reasons I'm happy to be talking to the Meridian Chamber because I'm really consider myself to be a pro-business candidate. I've done a lot of machinery moving with a lot of businesses here locally. You know, my dad started working for Inland Crane over a decade ago. He's since retired now, but I've done a lot of work with him. And you know, we were on the team that moved the antique tractors into the jump building downtown. But you know, moving was not really in my blood. I've been really more active in politics is my calling. And I've served as the former Ada County Republican Chair, and I'm looking forward to serving as your Ada County Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. We appreciate that. Moving on to Ada County Commissioner, District Two, we're going to start with Mr. Rutherford. Two to three minutes, please. Your opening statement.
Thank you. I appreciate you asking me to be here this afternoon. I think it's important to have these forums so the business community and the voters can get to know us a little better. I'm a professional and not really a partisan politician. I really believe that this is a big business. Ada County government is $283 million a year. They employ 2,000 people. So it is a very big business, and I think my background prepared me to have a job like this. My qualifications and my hands-on management experience are as follows. I'm retired, professional civil structural engineer with over 40 years of experience. I'm also an Army veteran and a former business owner. My consulting business was in the fields of project management, project controls, heavy construction, and forensic engineering. I would bring that business owner experience to the job. During my career, I managed annual budgets as much as $460 million a year and up to 5,000 personnel. While working as a division director for the Hanford, Washington Department of Energy, I was nationally recognized on three different occasions for significantly reducing government overhead costs. I have extensive planning experience in both the public and the private sectors. I've managed large-scale infrastructure projects throughout the United States. I sincerely would work with all parties involved to find solutions that benefit our residents and our business community. As far as civic involvement, I'm presently a volunteer Medicare counselor, working for the State of Idaho Department of Insurance. I help people learn about Medicare, help them enroll in Medicare, answer their questions. I believe my volunteer experience, professional experience, and background qualify me to be an Ada County Commissioner, and I want to bring all of that experience to bear on the job. I look forward to your questions and I hope I can earn your vote today. Thank you.
Closing out, District Two, Ada County Commissioner, Mr. Beck, two to three minutes for your opening statement, please. And you're still muted.
Well, good afternoon. I appreciate the Meridian Chamber of Commerce putting on this forum. It's nice to be able to visit with voters, particularly in the Meridian community. The first place I lived in the Treasure Valley was in Meridian, so I do have a connection and an affinity for Meridian. A little bit about my background. I was born and raised on an Idaho potato farm in eastern Idaho. And we've lived in Ada County and Boise City and Meridian since 1976. My wife graduated from Capital High School. That's part of the reason we moved here, to be closer to family. I've been married to Rhonda for 46 years, literally. And we've raised our six children, a family of six children, three boys and three girls, and they've given us 17 grandchildren, and that's the joy of my life. And I might want to just add a little bit to what Commissioner Laciando said. Ada County is a safe county, and that's part of the reason we're here, is it's a safe county. It's a county that we've enjoyed raising our family. And that's another part of the reason I'm running for county commissioners, because I really don't want to see Ada County become like Portland, Seattle, or Minneapolis. Those things are the chaos in those communities. We have a good law enforcement. We have solid law enforcement in Ada County, and I think that's part of the reason that we're real safe. Now, relative to my political experience, I've been Republican all my life. I've been a delegate to three national conventions. I've been a region chairman of the Idaho Republican Party, and I've been a precinct committeeman, the grassroots, the organization of the Idaho Republican Party. Now, in terms of my public office, I was in the state senate. My colleagues elected me or chose me to be the senate majority leader, so I have lots of experience in the political arena. All of the Republicans in Ada County, the Republican legislators have endorsed my campaign. And so if we're going to get anything done in the Idaho Legislature, I'll have an instant access to all the, to the majority leader, to the soon-to-be the president pro temp of the senate. And I'm real happy with that because I think I can make a big difference on the Ada County Commission. Now, after the election of Phil Batt, I accepted the position of Executive Director of the Idaho Housing and Finance Association. So I'm intimately familiar with housing, with homelessness, and I think that I can add a lot to that in that arena, because we do have a big demand for housing in Ada County, and it's because of our reputation. We're a safe place to raise a family. We're a safe place to live, and that reputation is spreading out throughout the United States. In fact, a lot of people moving to this county right now are from some of those areas that I previously mentioned that are tired of the chaos in those counties. So anyway, I'm looking forward to the forum, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Sean, back to you for some Q and A.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you all again for joining us. We shared with you earlier the priorities that the Meridian Chamber of Commerce has in specific topics: transportation, economic development, taxes, and local government. So our questions are going to revolve around those topics primarily. And we're going to begin with transportation. Transportation is crucial to Idaho's economy, and further delays will only strangle Idaho's economic vitality, but will result in passing the problems to future generations. A recent survey conducted by the city of Meridian and the citizens has roads, traffic, transportation as its highest concern. Accordingly, the Meridian Chamber of Commerce supports the following projects for transportation infrastructure in our area, and that is the construction of the Lender Overpass at I-84 to provide additional arterial north-south access, continued improvements to Highway 2026 west of Locust Grove to reduce congestion, improve safety, and create economic opportunity for development, and the completion of state Highway 16 extension to Highway 84 Central Expressway. While the county commissioner's office does not maintain the roads or the funding mechanism for the roads, the services you provide to the citizens of Ada County is dependent upon a strong transportation infrastructure. How would you do your part in bringing the groups together to ensure infrastructure is in place to support our projected growth? And we're going to go to Commissioner Laciando for your first response.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and it's really such an important first question to be asking because growth and the challenges of growth really sort of undergirds all of the issues that we're facing. As has been noted on many occasions, people love it here. People move away and they move right back, and folks are coming here from all over the country because this is such a great place to live. But if we don't keep up with our infrastructure, it won't stay that way. So that's why it was so important. Upon taking office, my fellow Commissioner Kenyon and I set immediately to convening all six cities and ACHD to start talking about coordinated growth planning. A lot of residents are frustrated when they hear there's a land use approval process over here, a road process over there, and it's not to point fingers at anyone. It's just simply that that's the way it's set up in local government, but we need to do better and get better. And so we've been taking a really hard look at those processes, and I'm really proud that for the first time ever, we are now collectively running a fiscal impact analysis on all of our comprehensive plans. And what that is going to do is going to tell us, can we afford it long-term? Impact fees pay for the construction of new roads, for example, but they don't pay for the ongoing operations and maintenance. So it's really important for us to take a hard look at things from a longevity perspective, so we're not burdening the taxpayers. And similarly, as we think about where new developments might go, we have to be thinking about that as well. If we cannot afford to pay for the existing operation and maintenance of our existing roads, we have to take a hard look at where new roads should be going. So it's really a both-and. It's not a really simple conversation, but we are working hard with all of our sister cities to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Laciando. Mr. Davidson, your thoughts on how the county commissioner's office can help work to bring all the groups together to solve our transportation challenges?
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, well, transportation and infrastructure improvements are going to be a priority of mine because I think it's critical to long-term health and growth of Ada County. Now, obviously, we're growing, and everybody, nobody wants to grow. Everybody wants it still to still be the sort of idyllic small-town America, but we've just, we've kind of become a victim of our own popularity with people across the country moving here, making us one of the fastest-growing communities in North America. And that's just the reality, and we're going to have to deal with that and adjust with it. And so we can't really necessarily fight growth. We just have to plan for it and try to maintain the character and the community of the small-town vibe that we all moved here for. So I really do support, you know, working together with the other leaders on the ACHD, who I know some already, the city council members and mayors of each cities to come up with plans, ideas, and innovations to our roads. I think there's a lot of room for improvement. I mean, anybody who's been driving I-84 for the last 20 years has probably never been a fan of how it's been set up and the endless construction there. And I think there's a lot of room for improvement in how we build roads. I know we're subject to a lot of federal requirements, but I just, I came from a place where the roads seem to work a lot better than they do here, and there seems to be a lot of wasteful spending going on. Looking out perfectly good sidewalks to put in those yellow bumpy metal squares on every little section of street, that seemed to be a waste of money. I noticed that our streets are not that clean, especially in the residential areas. The way that they're designed now tends to trap dirt and debris that can't be easily cleaned away or go down to the sewer. And so another thing is weeds. Weeds grow through the streets and the sidewalks everywhere, and as part of quality of life, I think the cities and the county need to step up on weed removal from our streets and sidewalks. It's, you know, it might be a small thing, but I think that really goes to quality of life.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Mr. Rutherford, your views on how the legislature can address transportation? Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've been involved as a bridge designer. I worked as a structural bridge designer. I've also worked on highway designs. And so having said that, simply widening our roads and building them up to hold more cars in the long run has not proven to be effective. We need to encourage things like telecommuting, multimodal transportation systems, better bus systems, ride cure systems, connecting bike paths, and approaches that take puddle deals off the roads. And there are many options to do that. As a county commissioner, I would support land use decisions that put dense units of housing along well-established and well-connected roads, and I support our coordinated planning with the six cities in Ada County Highway District. We also need to include Canyon County. Canyon County is a major contributor to our traffic. Anybody who lives, I live in Meridian, pretty close to Ginger Road. If you're on that road, anytime between 7 o'clock in the morning and 9 o'clock, it's just like a parking lot, and a lot of that traffic is coming from Canyon County. So I think we need to go beyond Ada County, really deal with Canyon County as a feeder system. But I do think the major thing here is scheduling, integrating the planning, not only just the transportation planning, but as has been said, the construction of housing units. They all feed each other, but anytime you improve the roads, you can guarantee that you're going to have more development along those roads and with that additional traffic. So we need to look beyond that and really find some innovative ways to help people get out of their car and get to work another way.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford. Mr. Beck?
Well, thank you. That's a great question. Transportation has been an ongoing issue in Ada County for years, and we are the victim of our own popularity because the demand is high. Right now, the housing market is just quite hot in every segment of the housing market, and going along with that is the corresponding increases in prices and traffic. Fortunately, we have, we do have a county-wide highway district that really is in charge of all the traffic for all of Ada County. We can work, and I agree with all those that have spoken previously, that we can, we can and should work with the cities and with the county highway district to work for a coordinated plan. I might, I might point out that I think the city of Meridian has done a fantastic job, for instance, with the approval of the Brighton Development. That's an example that we can all learn from. The Brighton Development, they agreed to put in some infrastructure relative to how, to roads and for schools, and we should do more of that. Let the developer pay for a lot of it. I have no problem with impact fees if we want to oppose impact fees, as long as they're used strictly for the infrastructure along with the housing, because that's what, I was in the legislature when we first approved impact fees, and that was one of the strict requirements, is that there has to be a connection to the development. So yeah, housing and transportation is a difficult issue right now. However, I believe this virus thing has contributed to a lot more people working from home, and I know a lot more people are going to continue to work from home, which of course takes, takes traffic, cars off our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Several of you touched on, you know, one of the subjects that Meridian has been, you know, in the news for recently, and that is our popularity and being recognized as best places to live, best places for businesses to start. Economic development is something that Meridian Chamber definitely favors, and the creation of jobs, reduction of regulation on businesses, encouraging businesses to grow and prosper, and making it easier for business to provide goods and services to our citizens for trade is important. How do you propose that Meridian and the Greater Treasure Valley handle the national attention that we've received, and how is Ada County going to keep up with the rapid increase in population with the services that are responsible for providing to its citizens? We'll begin with Commissioner Laciando.
Thank you. Well, I'm really pleased to work alongside Mayor Simison. I think he has the experience, the expertise to really lead Meridian through this time of growth. And as I mentioned before, at Ada County, we have a very special role and a specific role to make sure that we are providing the backbone of those important public safety services. To your point, businesses need to have a stable environment, need to know that they're going to be able to grow and thrive in a safe place, and that's really the real core function of what we are here to do. As it relates to keeping up with infrastructure as we grow, you've noted in some of your legislative priorities, I took a look at some specific funding mechanisms that you're interested in pursuing at the Idaho Legislature, and I think that's wholly appropriate because both residents and businesses, existing businesses, really can't keep bearing the cost of ongoing growth. That is just not tenable in the long run. So I think there's a couple things. One of them is impact fees for schools that I know has been discussed at length, but if you take a look at your tax bill, about a third of your tax bill, especially in the west Ada district that's growing by about 1,000 students a year, is for bonds or levies. So that's going to be an important opportunity this coming legislative session. Similarly, we're in the process of, for the first time, doing countywide impact fees, and quickly realized that ambulance districts are not covered under that statute. And so again, if a new development is proposed somewhere and we do not have adequate ability to provide service, right now, it's literally a countywide taxing district that has to bear the brunt of that, not that localized area for those impact fees. So those are just a couple solutions. I know that you also have in your legislative priorities, taking a look at a local option tax that has been bandied about for, I don't know, probably 30 or 40 years, but maybe it is an idea whose time has come, and I certainly would hope that our legislators will take a look at that.
Commissioner Laciando, to follow up and kind of pose that question to everyone else, the local option tax authority is a mechanism for funding infrastructure that, and it's not something, it's going to take the legislature to approve that, but is that something that you would be in support of?
It is. It is, because I think it takes the burden off of just property taxpayers. And right now, only resort cities are able to utilize that mechanism. So Ketchum, McCall, they have the ability to do it, and if you visit those places, they have some really thriving areas because of it. I think it's going to be an important tool for us, especially if we are to implement the things that people say they want. The recent Compass survey that came out indicated that people want better access to transportation, and we've got to have a way to pay for it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Davidson, how do you propose that Ada County keep up with the rapid increase in population and demand for county services? And do you support local option tax?
Well, yeah, we, we do have to strive to keep up with the public safety and the, all the infrastructure required to continue to grow. I am a little wary of the local option tax. If, I think if the legislature does put that in place, it needs to be very, very contained, very specific about what local authorities can raise taxes for, because generally, when that power is given to city governments, they're, they have a tendency to abuse it. One of the factors is that city elections have dramatically lower turnout than elections in the even-numbered years. And so as a result, you have a lot less citizens paying attention to what city councils actually do, a lot less participation in the elections. I think city officials know that that's one way that they can sneak past a lot of expensive projects, tax increases, because they have a very small base that they have to campaign to. It's not the broad base of the citizens who are looking at those issues. That was one of the reasons why as Ada County Republican Chair, we put together a committee to reexamine the entire political structure of municipalities and looked at things such as whether or not we should make those elections partisan, whether they should be moved into the even-year elections. One, one aspect of that committee that did get adopted was to have elect councilmen by district in cities over 100,000. And seeing Boise, virtually every councilman And seeing Boise, virtually every councilman and the mayor lived in the north end. And we felt like the other areas of the city were being underrepresented. So Meridian may have to implement that here pretty soon as they grow. But yeah, I, you know, I'm reading through your list here and I love the fact that you mentioned support legislation to improve access for liquor licenses. That's been a, you know, the, the antiquated liquor license system we have in Idaho is kind of a relic of prohibition in the Al Capone days. And that dramatically hurts the hospitality industry, bars and restaurants who, who want to expand. So I would support legislation to make it easier to get liquor licenses. We also need to look at the smaller businesses, people just like landlords. You know, there's a lot of people buying property in Meridian to rent out, but we're making life harder on landlords unfairly in Idaho. And, you know, with all the COVID shutdowns, I really want to examine all the, any, any impediment to getting business back on their feet that was created by the government-imposed shutdowns.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Mr. Rutherford? Mr. Rutherford, how do you propose that Ada County keep up with the rapid increase in population and demand for county services?
Well, I saw on your economic development write-up that you mentioned new growth, including impact fees. Presently, in some areas, impact fees are not being imposed. In, in other areas, they are. I mean, I, I would promote impact fees as a reasonable way to keep up with growth. Impact fees are one-time, they're called developmental impact fees, one-time cost to a developer to pay for the new development. And this covers, you know, things that are associated with, with actually building the development. And in Ada County, it would apply to the Sheriff's Department, it would apply to our ambulance services, also our parks and waterways. So it is, it is a way to make the developers pay their fair share for growth instead of continuing to burden the, those who presently pay property taxes. And I would support those. Another thing, I, in having been in business, I know that one of the main concerns is attracting people to work here. Who come to work here, they have to find a place to live. They have to bring their families with them, they have to look at the schools. That's always a big challenge for an area that's growing this quick. So I think the businesses should be interested and should support their employees that they're going to bring to this area. You talk about living wages, you talk about how are people going to afford these homes? And so I, again, I go back to high-density housing, I go back to more affordable homes being built. We have a large community out there that is really struggling with not being able to buy a home and also people who have a home that are in danger of losing their home. So I'm, I think there's a couple of pieces that really mesh together here. And, and I would support all those, talking about those and trying to find solutions to those.
Thank you. Mr. Beck?
Well, there's no question about it. We need to have a safe community. I think we do have a safe community. Now, the question of local option tax is, is a big question. For me to support a local option tax, and I am open to, to that discussion, I'd have to see what the actual tax was, how it would impact our, our business community. For instance, I'd hate to see an 8% sales tax in Ada County and have Canyon County with a 6% sales tax. I think that would hurt our retail component, particularly in cars and other large, large items. So I'd have to actually see what the, what the local option tax would be. Again, I don't have any problem with, with an impact fee. However, that does increase, it's not a cost to, to developers, it's a cost to the homeowners when you, when you impose an impact fee, the, or a, or a development fee, impact fee. So I'd have to take a look at, at the whole overall picture because we, we do have a serious issue with affordable housing. Housing prices have skyrocketed in Ada County and it's because of the lack of supply. So I think we need to do more to increase the supply of housing so that we, we can at least get the affordability down better. So anyway, yeah, I'd look at all those and I'd work cooperatively with our legislators and with our other cities. Thank you.
So taxes, definitely something that everyone has concerns about, especially if you're a property owner. The Meridian Chamber supports a tax structure which is fair, stable, provides adequately for those services the government must provide and encourages investments by businesses and individuals in the growth of our economy. How do you, as county, if, if you're elected to serve as a county commissioner, how, how do you propose the state address this tax reform discussion, but continue to support the need for local cities and counties to keep up with that growth? Commissioner LaChando?
Thank you. Such an important question because people are really feeling the pain of their property taxes. And simultaneous, we've got this property tax interim committee going on and I'm, I'm really concerned, I don't believe they are really getting at the, the heart of the issue. And, and that is that the tax burden continues to shift onto residence over commercial. And it doesn't mean we want to overburden our, our businesses, but it needs to be a balanced approach. And I'll, I'll just give you an example. Clerk McGrane is the financial whiz at Ada County and he's run the numbers for us to show that in 2019, even if every single city in Ada County did not increase our budget, residential homeowners still would have seen a tax increase. And that is because that burden keeps shifting onto residential, which really started with the capping of the homeowner's exemption in 2016. So for me, there are three key things that we need to do to start to get at this. And that is, one, taking another look at the homeowner's exemption, whether we need to index it or raise it, we need to take a hard look at that. Two, we need to have the legislature relook at the circuit breaker. That is a program specifically designed for low-income seniors, for veterans, for widows and widowers. And it hasn't been updated since 2006. So the value of it has significantly gone down. And number three, as noted before, we need impact fees and we really need the legislature to step up and do their part there because I can't tell you how many folks I've talked to who are, you know, they've lived in their home for 40 years and they are really worried about being taxed out of their home. And I, I think that's something none of us want to see.
Thank you, Commissioner LaChando. Mr. Davidson?
Well, you know, as a Republican, I certainly support lowering taxes to help our business community. You know, we're attracting a lot of people to live in Ada County. We have to remember, we need to attract businesses as well so that people have jobs. And, you know, if you live in Meridian and you have to commute to Boise, that's, it's not something you look forward to each and every day. And I would love to see a lot more business development in Meridian to just allow people to not have to deal with that commute. You know, we're, we're all striving to be able to work and live in the same neighborhood. And so I think, you know, the scale has to tip towards reducing taxes on businesses because we, you know, we're going to be in trouble without that economic development in Meridian. You know, you guys support the review of potential elimination of sales tax exemptions. That's something I favor as well. I'm, I'm not a huge proponent of carving out endless exemptions and exceptions for, for different industries that are favored by government. I think it needs to be more a uniform playing field when it comes to sales taxes. You know, the government really just needs to get out of the way and let, let the free market and let businesses do what they need to do. We've seen that so many businesses have been hurt by the shutdowns and the lockdowns over COVID. And those even continue to this day. It's been long enough, we've seen how, how the virus operates, we know what we can do to reopen completely. And that's simply by encouraging masks and social distancing and allowing each business to come up with their own masking and distance policy for themselves. I think we can get the economy up and running again and get our businesses back open.
Thank you. We'll be definitely visiting that question of COVID-19 in the business response shortly. Mr. Rutherford, how do you propose that the county commissioners help address the, the tax reform that's needed in our state?
Well, I, I looked at my tax bill a couple of months ago and realized that 30% of it is school taxes, 30% of it is the state of Meridian, 25% was Ada County. I believe 6% is Ada County Highway District. So our focus as Ada County Commissioners would be that 25% piece. And it's just our job as public servants to always be looking for ways to provide services at best cost. And, and I believe with my experience and background, I know how to do that. And I would just continue to support the, the work that has been done by the existing commissioners. They did a really good job to share of reducing the budget without sacrificing essential services. So I would just continue that and, and work with them. The other part of this is that, you know, half of the Ada County budget is funded by property taxes. The other half is funded by services. So we really have to look at, when we look at the services side, you know, are we being adequately paid for our services? The legislature sets some of these rates, especially when you get into vehicle registration rates. And I think we need to take a hard look at, are these services paying for the development? And make, and make sure that they are. On the tax, taxable side, the majority of that is for the Sheriff's Department and also the prison system. So we really need to take a hard look at what we're paying for, what we're getting. Is there any overlap between the Sheriff's Department and, and the cities of Boise and Meridian, Eagle, Huna, Star? And come up with some recommendations to lower those costs.
Thank you. Mr. Beck?
Yes, once again, a great question. How can we lower the property tax burden on the citizens of Ada County? And one of the ways we can lower the property tax burden, at least for homeowners, is go back to the index that we had prior to 2016 for the homeowner's exemption. That, we put that on years before that and it worked fairly well. But then with the ever-increasing values of property, there has been a shift from, from homeowners to, to more of a commercial taxation. So we, we do need to take, take a look at that. The other thing is actually the budgets. When you, all of our property taxes are, are as a, a result of the budget. Last year, the Ada County Commission increased the budget 11 and 1/2%. That was well beyond the population increase and even inflation. And that, that's why the property taxes went, went up. So we need to get a handle on the budget. I propose maybe we freeze the budget, the, the property tax portion of the budget for at least one year while we can get a handle on it so that we can provide some relief to our, to our property taxpayers. That's what we need to do. Now, as opposed to what the current county commission is doing, they just, they just are in the process of putting us about $100 million in debt for a coroner's facility and for a new jail expansion. While we probably need both, we need to have, talk about local option, there is a mechanism right in our constitution for the people to, to approve of those bonds. And that's what they should do. And while I, I would have to talk to Sheriff Bartlett, but he seems to think we need a new jail and so, or leave expanded jails. So I, I would probably get out and, and support it. But we already have a mechanism, we should be using that mechanism instead of the, the mechanism we're using now to expand it.
Thank you. So COVID-19 and the impact on businesses. It's something that the Meridian Chamber has been very involved with, with our, with our small businesses. And they've been through a lot this year. And we're going to continue to see businesses struggle, we're going to continue to see business closures. And I think this question is very relevant to the discussion because with county commissioners appointing the board members of the central district health, if elected, how do you propose to be supportive of local business community, but keep the community safe and healthy? Now, I'm going to reverse the order of this and give Mr. Beck an opportunity to respond first. So if elected, how do you propose to be supportive of local business community, but keep the community safe and healthy? Mr. Beck?
Okay, thank you. And that's a big question. The, the Board of Commissioners do not appoint all the members of the, of the central district health, just one of the county commissioners is on the board of health. And, and the three choose which one that's going to be. I am not completely in support of everything that the central district health have done. We do need to be safe, we need to follow the, the, the advice of our experts. And I think we're, we're learning a lot more about this virus than we did when it started out. Because our hospitals are not overburdened, we've learned that it mainly affects senior citizens, it doesn't affect younger people as, as much. And so I think as we learn more about this thing, we should make sure that our businesses have the right to do what they want to do, to open their businesses up. And if they want to, if they want to have masks and things like that on the, on the business, then I say fine. But I think that we're learning a lot about this virus and it's, it's, we need to get our, our country going again and our, our, our community. Thank you.
So Mr. Beck, quick, quick follow-up on that related to COVID, just so we, our voters can truly understand your position. Would you support a mask mandate in Ada County?
No.
And why not?
Well, I don't think it's necessary. I think that, that we're, we're doing everything we can to, to maintain safety. I think that's up to the individual. If a person wants to wear a ma, wear a mask, I have no problem with that. I'm seeing more and more people that are not wearing these, the mask and they're, and they're doing just fine. I don't think that it's, that it, it actually benefits. We've had this mask mandate for the last, I don't know, two or three, a month, a month and a half, and our, our numbers of cases have actually gone up a little bit. I don't see that it's, that it's that beneficial, actually. Thank you.
Mr. Rutherford, if elected, how do you propose to be supportive of the local business community, but keep the community safe and healthy?
As a former business owner, I understand the challenges that businesses face. One of those is property taxes, et cetera. Regarding the COVID guidelines, allowing COVID hotspots to open up is, in my opinion, short-sighted, dangerous and it's bad for business. As a former business owner, I know one of the concerns is keeping their skilled workers and their customers healthy. It's not easy to replace people. And you, each business invests time and energy into training their workers and if those people become ill and they have to take time off, I mean, that, that's just not good for business. Recently, a fact that was yesterday in the Idaho President, of all the 50 states, Idaho was noted as being the second highest positivity testing rating because COVID-19. We're second in the country for testing positive. I think we have a problem. And we continue to have a problem with denial here. Last week, during the League of Women's Votes forums, Mr. Beck stated that he had just attended a large event in Eagle a couple of weeks ago with the mayor of Eagle in attendance. He was actually using this as an example of why we don't need to follow COVID guidelines that have been issued by the medical and scientific community. This type of irresponsible behavior by a candidate for public office is one of the major reasons why we have to put COVID-19 guidelines in place. We have to listen to the medical and science professionals. It's the only way to reduce the spread of this virus. I don't know of any place in the United States that has been successful at letting people do what they feel like doing. It just doesn't work. Personally, my wife has asthma. She, if she's infected by COVID-19, it's very likely she'll become ill or worse. I social distance, I wear a mask, I wash my hands. I don't consider it a burden. It's not a big deal. It's certainly worth the time and effort to do these things. So I, I think this is about protecting our communities' most vulnerable people and the employees who work in these businesses. Let's face it, every day, face the public, every day, they're, they're face-to-face with somebody who may be carrying the virus.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson, if elected, how do you, how do you propose to be supportive of local business community, but keep the community safe and healthy?
Well, I, I propose fully reopening the economy and our local businesses and giving them the information they need to be able to make their own decisions about their own policies. And that can include, they have a right as business owners to require masks and to require social distancing. They could take other, other steps like only letting a certain number of people in the, in their stores at the same time. And basically, that is what has been happening. You know, there was- You know, there was, you know, the shutdowns were a lot more expansive than they are now. But businesses were still finding ways to adapt. You know, I've talked to businesses that they read the governor's order and they sort of found ways around it. And they've been able to successfully continue to stay in business, although it's been a challenge, just by practicing common sense, social distancing and wearing masks. We have to admit though that, look, the public, if the public does not see that there's a major issue here, they're not going to follow any guidelines, whether they're mandatory or not. And I think common sense, people are looking around going, okay, well, this may be a contagious virus. We can see that 99% of the people recover from it. Most people recover without having to go to the hospital. The age group that's affected most is over 65. So we know that we have to specifically take care and be cautious with senior citizens. But for children and for healthy adults, this is something that we can learn to live with. I just, I don't really hear a plan from our current elected officials, and that's Republican or Democrat. I don't get the sense that there is a real plan because we don't know what the future holds. Are we just waiting around for a vaccine, which may or may never come? If the vaccine comes, is it going to be mandated? And even if it's not mandated, how do we vaccinate 300 million Americans in a timely fashion with regard to safety? In my opinion, we need to reopen and train businesses to encourage social distancing, wearing masks. It's a little different with government, you know, the schools are keeping kids out. You know, the West Ada School trustees are now subject to a recall because they're not fully reopened. You know, if part of that negotiation is kids have to wear masks to go back to school, I'm for that. I don't think they should have to. But if that's what it takes to get the kids back to school, to get the teachers' unions to relent and go back to work, then I'm willing to look at that.
Mr. Davidson, a quick follow-up for you. You mentioned that you don't see a plan right now. So if you, it sounds like you, if you were elected, your plan would be fully open and return to normal operations. If there were to be a major spike, it was mentioned earlier that Idaho right now is the second in the nation for positivity rate, which is over 20, where the World Health Organization recommends it to be under five. Sounds like your plan would be live with the virus and deal with the consequences. Is that effective? And what would you do if there was a major spike and more people were dying in Idaho from this disease?
Well, you know, there's a narrative there and the way that the media covers this issue, it's a narrative that I don't necessarily agree with. So you said, we're, you know, we're going through a spike in positive cases. Okay, well, what does that mean? Does that mean people are dying? No, not necessarily. Does that mean people are going to the hospital? No, not necessarily. But when you say that there's a spike and we're the highest in the nation, there's an implication that people are dying in the ERs and that the hospitals are full. The media, I don't think has done a great job of communicating the full statistics relating to COVID. There may be a lot of positive cases, but what does that mean? That doesn't necessarily mean there have been deaths or hospitalizations. And I think the media is sort of creating more of a climate of fear with regard to reopening by talking about positive cases without mentioning what the outcome of those positive cases are. Again, the public has basically gone back to normal operations regardless of the shutdown orders in place because common sense says, we now see that we, not only can we, but we have to live with this virus for the indefinite future. Vaccine or not, we have to get back to some semblance of reality here.
Commissioner LaShonda, you are the only incumbent in this forum today and someone that is serving on the Central District Health Board right now. What do you see as other measures to be supportive of local business community or changes that need to be made to keep our community safe and healthy?
Well, thank you. You know, when I joined the Board of Central District Health about a year and a half ago, I expected seven times a year meetings and primarily looking at the budget. And it has turned into, on any given week, about 40% of my time in terms of what I'm doing. So I think it's important to begin with the end in mind. And that is, we have two overarching goals. Protect the vulnerable, don't overwhelm the healthcare system. And it's the second one that people really struggle to understand. And that is, if we do get to a place, as we were right there in July, where we are overwhelmed and we don't have the staff to take care of people, folks who are coming in for more routine situations like heart attack and stroke, they won't be able to be taken care of appropriately. And I see this every day. My husband is an internal medicine physician. I shared in another forum that currently he's an outpatient physician. He hasn't actually practiced in the hospital for more than five years. But he was actually called to work in Nampa in July, a hospital he's never worked in and in a setting that he hasn't worked in in more than five years. So that's very telling to you. And when the CEOs of all of the healthcare organizations in South Idaho are calling you and begging for help, you need to listen. And that's exactly what I did. So the second part, as it relates to businesses. I supported a mask mandate precisely because businesses were asking me for it. They felt concerned and frustrated because they saw the guidelines. But it put them in a really untenable position with not having the backup from the health district. So not only to stop the spread, but really to provide support to our businesses to do the right thing. That's why I felt it was important to issue that mandate. And, you know, I want to speak to some things that have been noted today. We are not doing just fine. Our cases are rising. And unfortunately, there's a time lag here. More cases eventually mean more hospitalizations, eventually mean more deaths. We just lost one of our Ada County employees just this week. He was only 65. And it's because folks are not taking the very simple steps, like wearing a mask, avoiding large crowds, staying socially distant. It is so incredibly frustrating that people are not taking personal responsibility here. And as someone who's on the health board and as your commissioner and as a mom who has her kids outside this very door doing school and staying quiet, we need people to take this seriously and we need leaders who take this seriously. And I was very dismayed to see two of the candidates on this forum appearing without masks and at large events. And we have to do better. And when we head into the red zone for schools potentially next week, we need to ask ourselves exactly why.
Commissioner, quick follow-up question on that. You mentioned you support the mask mandate. Can you help us understand a little bit more about how to enforce that? There's been a few candidates here say it's unenforceable. Should Ada County and law enforcement be giving citations to those individuals so that we can get to a place where we can keep this virus in control?
I think we're having some ongoing conversations and unfortunately, we have very bloodline to right now. Nobody wants to issue this leader. I don't want our personal leaders out there as leaders for folks. We don't have the opportunity to do an infraction and that's something that the legislature would have to approve. So we're struggling with the laws that we have, having to handle pandemics of this magnitude. And we're having a mental trauma and I'll tell you, every week is a new challenge and the thing that we are discussing, constant communication with the health district, with all six cities about how we're navigating this.
Thank you. As we wrap up here, we're right at our hour. I want to give everyone an opportunity to make a closing statement and tell the voters of Meridian why they should vote for you as their Ada County Commissioner. Let's begin with Mr. Beck. Would you mind starting the thought?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to have this forum. I want to clear one thing up. I do not oppose masks. I do not oppose people wearing masks. I just don't want the government to arrest people if you don't wear a mask. And I think that's what's going to happen. I look at the state of South Dakota nationally and they don't have any mask mandate and they've got a lower rate, they're getting on with their business. You look internationally, you look at Sweden, they don't have a mask mandate and they're doing just fine, better than the rest of Europe. And so I don't think the government should really be talking about arresting people like they did up in Moscow if you didn't have a mask on. I support wearing a mask. I wear a mask when I go in public when I'm not proper, property, social distance. But I don't think the government should require that. Anyway, it's been nice participating in this forum. I'd ask for your vote on November 3rd.
Thank you. Mr. Rutherford, why should the people of Meridian vote for you for their county commissioner?
As a county, I'm running to keep property taxes as low as practicable and to make sure developers are paying their fair share for growth. I've worked as a professional engineer and a manager for 40 years. I have a lot of experience managing this size budget, this size organizations. I know I can help make a difference in the running of the county. I'm also making sure, trying to make sure we get through this pandemic with a healthy community and a strong economy. I'm running to reinforce efforts to grow our county responsibly and not outpace our infrastructure. Thank you for your consideration. I hope I've earned your support for this election.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford. Mr. Davidson, why should the people of Meridian elect you as their county commissioner?
Well, thanks for having me at this forum. And I just want to say to the business community of Meridian, I'm here for you. And I am going to do everything in my power to get businesses back up and running, even if I have to help you fill out grant paperwork to get some of these grants that are coming through to help get businesses back on their feet. But I do consider myself to be a pro-business candidate. And I think I'm here to help get things back to normal. And let me just, you know, follow up on the COVID thing. We do need to protect our senior citizens as the most vulnerable population. Encourage your grandparents to wear masks and to social distance. But I don't think I can tell somebody who lived through World War II how to live their life and to tell them what precautions they need to take. You know, if you've lived a good life, you know exactly what you want to do with your life and you could decide for yourself how many precautions you want to take, how much you want to limit your own freedom. But that's the great thing about, I think, being an American. You have the right to your own life, liberty of property. And if, you know, I am not here to get in the way of that. So thanks for having me and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Commissioner LaShonda, your final statements.
Thank you. I was on time because my children were being allowed out. So, no, I think really what I might ask you for is to take a look at my track record. And I think I have very much demonstrated that I personally is committed to ensuring our high quality of life here while ensuring physical responsibility, while promoting thoughtful growth. And most importantly, I'm not here to entertain a partisan agenda. I was not involved in partisan politics before deciding to run for the South Office. I am here to ensure that Ada County is a great place to live and to work and to grow well, just like it was for me. And I am a fourth-generation Idaho woman. And lastly, I would just note, with freedom comes responsibility. And we do have a responsibility to each other. And we learn to live in this community and that's taking care of one another. And I'm doing things during this pandemic because I care about my community and I care about others. And that's how we have to do this and get the other ones together.
Thank you very much. Once again, I appreciate all of you joining us. Matt, would you like to make a closing remark?
Sean, I really feel this is incredibly important for you to take the time. And I hope that thousands of people watch this and can make their decisions to make sure we elect the candidate that aligns with Idaho's needs. So I wanted to just thank you all for the time. Please pick up a copy of the Idaho Press or the Meridian Press to hear more about this year's election. And we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you all for joining us. Thank you.